John, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Call to order, the August 27, 2024, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and by remote means in accordance with applicable law, specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our party is the right and/or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. In-person meeting intends that members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel Eight, Verizon Channel Twenty-Six, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Try to make sure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, we will post on town of North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If you'd like to participate in any public hearings, you can do so in person, or you can email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to geneenright@jnrigth@northandoverma.gov. Question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Gene, can you take roll, please?
Yes. Aton Goldberg.
I'm here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
Christopher Cusoros.
Here.
John Sandance. Yeah, okay.
Yep, he's here, but I can't really hear him.
So just John's attending remotely this evening, and votes will be roll call.
Okay. Lot release, 110 Fuller Road, 130...actually, hold on, let's do public...is anyone here for any of the public hearings? We're just gonna do those first. Continued public hearings, 335 Salem Street, continue until September 24th. That was on...they did get a...Salem Street did get a renewed opinion from the building inspector that the variance had not been exercised, and they have...are pursuing a new variance at the zoning board. That meeting is scheduled for...
September 17th at the ZBIA, and they requested a continuance to the September 24th planning board meeting.
So that'll be continued until September 24th. 1101 Turnpike Street request continues until September 10th, 2024. That will be allowed till 20...September 10th, 2024. 1250 Oz Good Street request for continuous until September 10th, 2024. That will also be continued until September 10th, 2024.
So 1111 Turnpike Street is actually an extension of the time frame to render a decision, so I think you should motion to accept that extension to September 26th.
Motion to...can we get a motion to extend the time for issuing a decision?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. John?
Yes.
Aye, vote aye. Peter?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Lot...yes, sir.
Frank Reagan E.C., 1939, Great Pond Road. Is it possible that you could speak into the microphone? I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Sure.
Please, thank you.
110 Fuller Road, Lot 139, lot release.
Right, so this lot release request is for the Coventry Estates subdivision, which was constructed in three phases in the late 80s and 90s. This lot was part of Coventry Estates Phase Two. Although we have found many of the recorded lot releases for the development, we cannot locate a recorded release for Lot 139. The house is for sale, and the closing attorney requires the board approve...requests that the board approve the lot release, and you have a copy of it here, and the copy is in the packet.
Any board member questions or comments?
No.
Nope. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the lot?
Is someone gonna speak on this?
I was just scared to say...I'm the closing attorney, Christine Bernadini, so I just came just in case there were any questions.
If you'd like someone to, but I don't...it seems pretty standard. I'm ready to go on it, if everyone else is. Can we get a motion to approve the lot release?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Aye vote, yes, that's approved. Can I have your pen for a second? We never want to make attorneys' heads explode, that is a good policy.
How often do you have to come to the planning board for a closing?
Uh, never.
Well, thank you for coming.
I've had to go to Conservation Commission before, so this was a much earlier meeting, so I appreciate that. I think the last time I was in this building was around like an 8:30 or 9 o'clock meeting.
Well, thanks for being here, in case there were questions.
No, I appreciate it, thanks for doing it so quickly. Thank you, everyone.
Chris? Uh, next, Great Pond Road, across from 1936 Great Pond Road, Jamie Valet, Environmental Partners, on behalf of the town of North Andover. Application for a watershed special permit under Article Four, Part Five, 195, 4.19(c) and Article 10, 195, 10.7, the town of North Andover zoning bylaw. Applicant proposes site improvements, including the demolition of the existing bituminous concrete boat launch retaining wall and gravel parking area. The work includes construction of a new hand-carry boat launch, mechanically stabilized earth block wall, permeable paver parking area and driveways, two bio-retention areas, and tree planting. The property is located in the R1 zoning district, and if I didn't say, it's an application for a watershed special permit. Okay, Gene, line this up for us.
Yep, so this project has been funded by the Community Preservation Committee and approved at town meeting. It has been phased over a few years. In the previous phase, the board reviewed conceptual plans. This past May's town meeting approved funding for restoration of the boat ramp area in the amount of $983,900. The project is before the Conservation Commission as well. Stormwater is being peer-reviewed by Hozley Winton. The first review letter just came in...I forget if it was today or yesterday, I believe yesterday. So there is some work to do there, but tonight, Environmental Partners is going to provide an overview of what has been applied for.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Valet with Environmental Partners, and this is my colleague, Bob Rafferty. We're here on behalf of the town of North Andover to present the North Lake Kichituat Boat Launch Project. I believe we had presented this project to you a year and a half or two years ago in the preliminary stages. So at this point, we're in the 75% design stage, and since submitting this application, we've made a few design changes, including the FEMA flood zone line, which has been updated to the preliminary flood zone mapping. And then we have adjusted the retaining wall approximately two feet inland to reduce impacts to the FEMA flood zone. So the project, the existing site, the boat launch is in disrepair, along with the existing retaining wall that follows the shoreline. And the site is off Great Pond Road with a driveway access to gravel parking area, and then to the northeast of the site is where the existing boat racks are today. So part of the proposed plan shown on Sheet C6 includes new vehicular traffic patterns with a circular driveway, a new parking...permeable parking area, including trailer parking and handicap parking. And then to the northwest off of the circular drive, now proposed is a drive or pathway to the new permeable boat launch, which is locked in with a large rock and revetment on either side. And then to the south...
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that okay to interrupt?
Yeah.
Feel free to ask questions as we go.
Two questions. You were just saying the boat ramp locking boulders and revetment. Aren't there also locking bollards?
There is, yep, so I was just about to get to that, so...
Okay, let me go to my other question then. You said there's trailer parking, where is that?
That is the 30-foot by 18-foot wide spacing delineated to the northwest corner of the parking area.
So the boat ramp, the only trailers that can use that would be the fire department.
Correct.
So why do we have trailer parking if there's no trailer launching of boats?
The trailer parking was incorporated for individuals who are trailering hand-carry boats.
Okay, thank you.
Kayaks, canoes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Could we just make that as a matter of record in our minutes, that the trailer area is for trailering hand-carry boats? Great, thanks, Gene.
And as you mentioned, Peter, the...there is a locking bollards before the boat launch ramp in order to keep individuals from backing trailers down the ramp because the intended use is for hand-carry boats. So we've actually...with reorientating the site and reorganizing the site, the new layout includes the boat racks closer to the boat launch to assist with reducing the walk to the boat ramp, as well as increasing site safety for pedestrian access, so they're no longer crossing the gravel driveway to get to the boat.
And just as a commentary, I think that's a tremendous improvement. I've never understood why the boat racks were put way off to the side, so having them close to the hand carries is really a very good improvement.
Is it grass under where the boat racks are?
Yes, that area will be grassed.
And that's where you have your boat, right?
Yeah, and I always have to walk without my shoes across the gravel, and it's not comfortable.
And then the walkway leading up to the boat launch, as well as the boat launch itself, will be a permeable stone paver.
Okay, good.
In the parking area, we've also incorporated a grass interlocking paver for the actual parking stalls, which will be less traffic than the maneuvering lanes, which the maneuvering lanes are the more durable paver. And then going back along the pathway leading to the boat launch, we've incorporated a new retaining wall that will follow a similar alignment to the old retaining wall. However, we've incorporated curves to increase the aesthetics of the site and follow the natural shoreline, adding in the curvature. And then the area behind...directly behind the wall will be grass lawn area with native tree plantings to replace the trees that will have to be removed from demolishing the existing wall. And then to the northeast end of the retaining wall, we have incorporated slope...riprap slope stabilization. The existing site has some erosion occurring there today, so that would protect the shoreline and the bank from any future erosion. And then lastly, for the stormwater management of the site, we've incorporated rain gardens between the roadway and the project site in order to collect runoff from Great Pond Road, as well as a small portion of the site. This was intended to improve the water quality to Lake Kichituac, because under today's conditions, there's minimal stormwater infrastructure along Great Pond Road, so the water from the impervious areas washes off Great Pond Road and sheet flows through the site on...and then eventually discharging into Lake Kichituac. So the intent there was to have the stormwater runoff flow to the rain gardens infiltrate, and then under peak conditions, if the rain gardens were to overflow, we have designed a ripraped swale and overflow culvert under the driveway to manage the stormwater. And then additionally, on the sheet before, I believe Sheet C5...oh, one more, please, Sheet C4. Just want to show the grading. There will be minor grade changes to incorporate collecting more stormwater directing to the bio-retention areas, but the intent wasn't to regrade the site and just keep the existing grades as much as possible.
Can you describe the boat launch itself?
Sure, actually, if you wouldn't mind going to Sheet CD5, please? Well, we have shown cross-sections of the boat launch, as well as a profile of the boat launch. I believe that's on CD5. Thank you. Yep. So to the right is the profile of the boat launch. Some design changes we've incorporated to the new boat launch ramp includes reducing the slope to about 12%, where today it's a steeper slope. So the new boat launch will be safer for individuals carrying boats and accessing and using the launch. Like I said, it will be permeable pavers with processed gravel below the permeable pavers, and then at the base of the ramp, that will be locked in with the stone revetment, as well as on either side, which you can see the cross-section to the left. And the intent is to have the revetment interlocking, so on either side of the ramp, it gives a smoother stone finish, not...the intent isn't to have jagged rocks or sticking out on either side. And then the ramp itself is eight feet wide.
And these permeable pavers, they're not slippery, they're...I mean, that's the only thing I worry about is, you know, the water coming off the boats and stuff like that, and people going up and down, that they're solid footing?
There's a detail, I believe, on Sheet CD3, if you could go...or four? Though...CD3, actually, on the upper right, or keep going, one more, please? One more? Or it's...I'll have to find it for you. But there'll be stone pavers, similar material to concrete, but will have better infiltration so that the water has a place to go instead of ponding or on the ramp itself.
Great.
And there's a detail, the six-inch removable locking bollard as well, which the intent there is to lock with the town lock, so only in emergency situations will the fire department or town have access to removing the locking bollards.
And I think I recall the fire chief raising a concern about different style locking bollards. And if I recall correctly, one of the concerns that was raised was, in the winter, if the style of locking bollard is basically a reinforced hole that the bollard slides into, that could fill with water and freeze, and you wouldn't be able to get the bollard into the sleeve. So what design did you come up with to provide a year-round, all-weather solution so that the bollards can not only be unlocked, but also replaced and locked again without inhibiting with freezing weather?
So following that concern, we reached out to the manufacturer who installs these types of locking bollards all over the country, and they guaranteed us that that wasn't a typical issue for this style of locking bollard, and that it's...would be embedded with crushed stone underneath, so any residual water would be able to infiltrate and not pond and freeze up the locking mechanisms of the bollard. But we can, in final design, explore other locking bollard systems.
So could we consider a look back here after the first winter, the performance of the locking bollards, and if it was inhibited with freezing weather?
How would we know?
I think we would have to ask the fire department if they had any trouble with it during the winter, but I don't want to put this burden on the fire department.
But if they don't use it, though? Like, is it going to be used every winter?
No, it might not be.
Right.
But I don't want to...I'm not suggesting that we create a reporting requirement for the fire department, I'm asking if the engineers can review and get back to us if there was an issue. For example, they could perhaps come out and observe it during freezing weather and see if it's still, you know, free to move. Or if there's another way to do it, that's fine with me. Just if we...if, in fact, the manufacturer's guarantee is not providing the performance we need, and then we're two or three years down the road, there's not going to be a resolution.
Yeah, I just don't know that it's a condition...it may just be something that we do...like, because we're permitting this, and then that's like a condition on ourselves, so...
Right.
It may be better that we just note and talk to DPW or somebody, hey, can you just make sure you test this once a year? I mean, I think we have like a...if we're purchasing it from a manufacturer, we have a certain amount of time to make sure that it works and get replacement parts and things like that.
If I may as well, we could also reach out to the manufacturer again to see if there's some type of warranty with purchasing the locking bollards, and what that warranty entails, whether they can come out and check the locking mechanism during the winter season.
Where are they from?
I don't recall the name of the manufacturer off the top of my head, but I can provide you that information.
I'm just curious if they're from Florida.
No, no, they're...they have locations all over.
If they've installed them all over, there's going to be cases.
They...yeah, these locking bollards, for instance, are pretty typical in like a commercial site, too, something you might see in like a shopping center to block entrances from, you know, just normal vehicular traffic and then deliveries.
Okay, well, if you could check the warranty, that'd be great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. John, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Chris, anything? Peter, anything else?
Could we just make a second note in the minutes that the performance of the ramp to prevent gas engine boats being trailed into the lake will be dependent on the fire department maintaining the bollards locking, which is not something I'm asking the fire department to do. The chief said that they would take care of that, but if we could just note that in the minutes.
Are there any public comments, anyone to...yeah, come out. Why don't...why don't you have a seat? Because, sir, you can...you can come up to the podium here. If you could kindly tell us your name and where you live, sir?
It's Frank Reagan E.C., 1939, Great Pond Road.
Okay, welcome.
I am directly across the street from the work that's going to take place. And basically, I'd like to start off by saying I am not opposed to the work they're going to do there. It's going to be an improvement because in the mid...there's absolutely no enforcement there, and I don't know if you could put something in this petition that would make enforcement available. But in the middle of the night, I mean, there's supposed to...there's rules and regulations. We live...we live by rules and regulations in this society, and there are rules and regulations that govern this place, but yet there's no enforcement. And if you go by there now...I used to pick up all the litter there, I don't anymore, and it's a mess out there right now. I don't...it looks like they had a party or something, and they just disposed of the stuff out there cow windows. But the questions I have, is that place still going to be open from, I think it's April 15th, to when they close November?
Yeah, there's no changes, as far as I'm aware, to the boating regulations based on the redesign.
Okay.
And I'd just comment on that a little bit. The lake usage regulations were modified a year or so ago to specify that timeframe you mentioned, April to November, I think it is. That's for the public boat racks, that the boat racks open for use in April, and then the boat racks have to be emptied in the closing date, November, whatever it is. But it does not mean that access to the lake stops. It's access to those boat racks, so anybody who has a boat stored on those racks has to remove the boat on the end date.
Right. Usually a letter...from my understanding, a letter goes out by...
Yep.
Department of Engineering.
Yeah, I think it's DPW.
Yeah, DPW.
Yep.
And it seems like he's always late sending the letters out, but they open on time on the specific date. But is there a sidewalk that's supposed to be installed along Great Pond Road?
I don't...I don't think so.
There may be future plans to install a sidewalk along Great Pond Road, but it's not...jump on a bike here.
Yeah.
There may be...
There may be future plans, I can't speak to as much, that there would be a sidewalk installed along Great Pond Road, but it is not part of this project.
Is there any change to the lighting as part of this project?
There is no lighting proposed as part of this project.
And so, and so the enforcement you're talking about, is it like people coming after hours? Is that?
Well, no, people not leaving when they're supposed to leave. It's supposed to be one hour prior to dusk and an hour later than dusk or something. But people are there at 10:00, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night?
Even without the lights?
Even without the lights. And then they put on their car lights. And as I said, I'm directly across the street and all of a sudden, I'm in my bedroom and it's all lit up. And I asked, I think it's John that works at the Department of Public Works. I've asked him if the cars, well, they're going to change it around anyway, but I had asked him if the cars could park facing the lake. That would solve a lot of problems. But I guess he never did it. But he told me that there was a sidewalk part of this project that was going to be installed along Great Pond Road. And I didn't know what side of the street he was talking about. I could ask him.
Yeah, I think it would be best to ask him, but it's associated with a different project. There are plans to redesign the intersection of 133 and 125.
Right, I heard that.
And I think he's linking that sidewalk to that project.
But that has nothing to do with this project here. He told me that a separate sidewalk was going to be installed that would go all the way down to the entrance.
Right, from Mad Maggie's to this. So in a way, it's linked because it's going to provide safer pedestrian access to the site. But the construction of that sidewalk and the plans for that sidewalk are not associated.
Good.
To your question about enforcement, the lake regulations are in two parts on the town website. One part is use of the lake. And then after that, there's a separate section about police department enforcement. And that was drafted by the police department. I'm not familiar with what their procedures are, but it is in writing as a second part to the lake regulations. If you scroll all the way down.
Are these plans available at the planning office or the planning board office?
Yes.
They are. So if I wanted to look at them tomorrow, I could stop into town hall and I could see this.
And if you do that and then you have any other comments, you can come back at our, you can either submit them in writing or you can come back at our next meeting and let us know based on looking at them if you have any additional comments.
Okay.
They're available online, too. So if you need help just accessing them online, I can help you with that as well. But if you prefer to see large, full-size copies in person, just come to the office.
Thank you. You're going to have a subsequent meeting to this meeting?
Yes.
Are we still going to get notified by certified mail or?
No.
No.
So, but it's going to be September 10th.
It's going to be September 10th?
September 10th, yep. We're still waiting on getting back information from our peer review about stormwater and then just any other comments that come in. So it may be that we decide on September 10th, depending on what information comes, but it will be discussed again on September 10th.
Thank you. Is there any way we could get enforcement there?
It is certainly a valid concern. It is outside of our jurisdiction. As Peter said, that may be a better question for the police department.
Have you tried calling the police to usher cars along? I know it's a process. I know you don't necessarily want to do it.
They don't know anything about the rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Or it's sold to dispatcher claims anyway.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we can always provide you the rules and regulations if you want to provide it to them. The project itself, since the rules and regulations aren't changing, those are sort of separate, but we're happy to provide those to you. And if you want, whoever you want to provide those to, you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your commentary. Any other public comments? Jean, any public comments that have arrived via email?
No.
Okay, so we'll continue this hearing until September 10th.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. And a very great, great presentation and I appreciate your good working knowledge of the designs. Much appreciated. All right, could you get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 13th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes. Easy peasy. Thank you, John.
Okay, guys. Thank you. Jean, thank you. Take care.
Happy Back-to-School Day tomorrow.